I'm going to open the meeting, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen on Monday, June 27, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar? The prayer will be offered by Acting City Deputy Clerk Tara, I'm sorry, Tara King. And the pledge by the flag will be led by Alderman Timmons.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there was anyone in the room with you during this meeting which is required under the right to no law.
Alderman O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Sullivan? Alderman Lee? Alderman Moran?
Present.
Alderman Lopez? Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Clemmons? Alderwoman Kelly?
Here.
Alderman Camo?
Present.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Govea?
Here.
Alderman Kathy?
Present.
Alderman Tebow? Alderwoman Timmons?
Here.
Alderman Welshire?
I am here.
All right, we have 10 physically in attendance, zero participating via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Okay, since this is a public hearing for the Budget Review Committee, I'm going to turn this meeting over to the Chair of the Budget Review Committee, Alderman Dowd.
Thank you, President Welshire. This evening, we're going to have a public hearing on two items, R 22038, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,450,000 for the Walnut Street Oval intersection project with West Pearl Street, streetscaping. And R 22042 relative to the supplemental appropriations of $320,000 from FY 2022, assigned fund balance in the Department 152 fire account, 51330 shift coverage. I will open the public hearing on R 22038. And is there someone here that is going to give us an overview?
Yes.
That would be you, Mr. Director Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again for the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. I'll keep my remarks brief this evening. I am here before you asking for your favorable consideration of R 22038. I submitted a memo to you back on May 24 that basically outlined the rationale for moving forward with this bond authorization. Essentially, we received notice that the state of New Hampshire is finally ready to move forward with a long-term priority project for the city. That is what we refer to as the squaring off of the Walnut Street Oval. That would be one of the major parts of the last legs of connecting the former Broad Street Parkway with Main Street. And helping to improve the connectivity of that intersection would then allow us, in a future project, more easily adopt the reversal of West Pearl Street. And so with that being said, Mr. Chair, we know that there's a lot of federal money coming into the state right now with the authorization of the infrastructure bill from Congress. This project has been identified as a priority project, and the state is putting aside $2 million, about 80% of the project cost. And we would need to authorize just over $500,000, a 20% match for this project. Now, in tandem with that, we have a secondary project, which is the West Pearl Street streetscaping, which, again, was an initiative that we started and we're further along on. It's been completely designed. And with the moving forward of the Walnut Street Oval project, it made sense to tie in the West Pearl Street streetscaping. That is an initiative of just slightly under 1.9 million. It would be a reconstruction of the public infrastructure along that way. It's been designed so the one-way reversal could occur at some point if so desired. And it is a project we had been working on over the last year or two, with the hopes that we would be able to move it forward to construction. And with the timing of this project, it seemed to make sense to look at these projects together as one, and it would be essentially a 50% match from the state if we were to move these two projects forward. And so I'll leave my comments there for right now, but again, I would ask for your favorable consideration of this bond.
Are there any questions that the Aldermen would like to ask? Alderman Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Director Cummings. Excuse my ignorance.
Like a go-in close direction.
Excuse my ignorance, but what specifically to the public and myself is streetscaping or scrapping?
Yeah, streetscaping, yep. So similar to what was done on Main Street a few years back, it's mainly, you try to refurbish the infrastructure that you can, but that infrastructure that is too far gone, you look to replace it and add in new infrastructure. It's generally sidewalk repair, paving repair, restriping, adding of street furniture, adding of street trees. If utility work needs to be done, you do the utility work prior. It is mainly above-ground type work when you're looking at the road and not underground type work, which could be sewer drains and water pipes and other type of utilities. So it's mainly focusing above the surface.
Can I have one?
Yes.
It's basically beautification.
Yes, yeah, a lot of it is beautification, yep. That's fair to say.
Thank you.
By the way, we've done, I know for sure we've done the water and the gas underneath the street already. I think we probably have done sewage, but I can't be sure.
And I can confirm for you that we've been working with the utilities because we've been planning on this project, and so they are working to address any of their issues before we start this project.
Any other questions for Director Cummings? Alderman Jettie?
So I don't want to take time away from the public part of the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that's?
No.
No, so, okay. So I'm not?
Oh, two people just raised their hands. But?
Some people did. There are some people.
Yeah, there are two people now that raised their hands.
Yeah, so I'll wait.
Okay. Rich Lannan? You, oh, we're not actually in questions yet, I'm sorry. We'll get to the public.
Okay.
Are there any more Alderman questions for? Yes. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cummings, because of the Walnut Street Oval work and the streetscaping, you are taking considerations with the traffic flow and everything, and the timing of these projects to minimize the traffic impact. I'm sure others would be concerned. It is something that's going to impact the traffic at some point, but that's understandable whenever you do construction.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, actually, Alderman O'Brien actually raised the last point that I wanted to make with you all, which was, I'm sure, a concern out there to the public is the actual implementation of this project. And so we're working very closely to make sure we logistically plan out appropriately. We've had a couple meetings on it in advance in anticipation of this project being funded to make sure we actually have a good plan in place and we set the right policies. For instance, we do not want the street to be closed down, and if it does need to be closed down, it needs to be kept to a minimum, and we need it opened up as quickly as possible. We have worked with the design team to develop these types of safety nets, if you will, because we want to have as minimal of a disruption as we can on that street. And we've had some community input as well. Before we started this initiative, we did a site tour last fall, met with the businesses. Before we do any type of construction, we're going to make sure that we sit down with the businesses again, have another type of community meeting, make sure that we hear all their concerns, and we incorporate it into the final plans.
Okay, Alderman Vivian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just from the length of the project-wise, as we were talking about traffic flow, is this months, is it weeks? How long would it take to complete?
That's a great question, and it depends on two things, money, how much money we have available, and then also when we actually get started. And time is really of the essence. I have been really trying to advocate to move this project forward because I'm hopeful that we can have some cost efficiencies by trying to line it up with the Performing Arts Center construction. You know, making sure that we take advantage of that and do it as efficiently as possible really means time is of the essence, and I would love to see the project move forward this late summer. I've been told in preparation for this meeting that the likelihood is getting the entire street done this year is going to be impossible. And so we would be looking to do it in a phased approach, Main Street to Elm Street, and then Elm Street to Walnut Street. This is all in theory, because, you know, we haven't bid the project yet, but in anticipation, that's what, of receiving the bids, that's what we're being told, and we need to plan accordingly. Thank you.
Alderman Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Cummings, I know we spoke previously about the funding mechanism. Could you walk us through if we, why we're not using TIF funds right now, or could we use them in the future, or how that would have worked, how that would work instead of just going straight bonding and using taxpayer dollars?
Sure, well, you're using taxpayer dollars no matter what.
Right.
Right? It's general obligation bond, not paid through a TIF, but this would be a TIF-eligible project if you wanted to use TIF proceeds to do this project. But I'd caution you that I haven't done the analysis to see if the current TIF could support this project, and that would need to be done. In addition to that, I was very clear and gave a very, a public commitment very early on that the school street TIF was created for two purposes and two purposes only, and I wanted to stay true to that, which was to support the Performing Arts Center and the construction of the parking structure on the first floor of the school street development. The way the current school street TIF is set up is any excess funds, once that debt service is paid, is supposed to go to the general fund. So in essence, you'd still be paying for it the same way.
Okay.
Now, with that being said, happy to revisit that if that's the pleasure, but I wanted to just stay true to what I had represented 24 months ago.
Alderman, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that in mind, because it's going to be a phased project, once the PAC is completed, obviously, the assessment's going to be a little bit different, and so that TIF difference might be a little bit more. Would we be able to cover that, the cost, later on? Because it's going to be paid off over time, so we could use TIF proceeds when we do our budgets to pay off that debt service, or?
I'm not following you.
So if we can't use the TIF right now because you haven't done the analysis, so let's say you couldn't, and we just bond it, general obligation. Once the PAC is complete and there is an assessment done on that building, obviously, we assume that it will go up because the building will be complete. So the amount of money that would go into the TIF would be more, and if we're paying, you know, 20-year bond, we could, in theory, use that TIF money to be paying off those years of debt service, specifically just for this project over time, rather than, you know, using other monies.
So I just want to clarify, the school street TIF is more than one property. It's a district. I don't know, there's like 10 or 15 properties in it. And the incremental assessment in all those properties could be captured, and you could use it for this project or a number of other ones.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Cummins?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Cummings, when we saw the initial plan for this, my understanding was that kind of the intent was the eventual reversing of Pearl Street, and it seemed like the project was kind of geared towards that. So is there a benefit to not doing that right away? I know you said that it would be something we could consider in the future. What would be the benefit in putting that off as opposed to doing that as soon as the project's completed?
I don't know if there would be a benefit of putting it off. I would actually say there would be a benefit to do that right away. And one of the reasons why we haven't done it is because you have a couple issues. The main one is the intersection that would need to be created at the corner of West Pearl Street and Walnut, and Central, if you will. That area needs to be completely reconfigured. Knowing and understanding that, once that happens, really, it's up to the city as to when you'd like to move forward with the reversal, and I would recommend that you do it right away, and I know that that has been expressed as the priority. What needs additional study, and the reason why I wouldn't just say we should just do it, is because you'd be reversing West Pearl Street, which means all the cars coming off of the Veterans Memorial Parkway will go to Main Street, and then you have all the cars coming from Hudson on East Pearl Street coming into Main Street. And Main Street may be able to accommodate that load, that additional capacity, but we don't know that. You want to study that further. And so therefore, what you may need to do is look to make some adjustments on either side of East Main Street to be able to get the flow across Main Street. Typically, the thought process is to look at Temple and Factory, reverse Factory, and that way you can have that flow more easily.
Alderman Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we're going to reverse Pearl and funnel it towards Main, but in the future we want to make Main smaller, would it, doesn't that create a traffic capacity problem when you're going to have less lanes of traffic on Main Street to funnel cars toward Main?
Sure, sure, and that's, I don't know. That's exactly what needs to be studied, is the capacity issue for Main Street. I would do it under its current scenario, to study it, to see what can be accommodated. That is not what has happened yet. We need to do that. What we also need to do is look to see what alternatives there may be to accommodate the east-to-west flow.
Okay.
If anything, because?
A lot of the discussion we're having shouldn't happen during the budget meeting. This is just if you have clarifying questions for what he presented, so it's very close. Any more questions relative to Director Cummings? All right, if not, I'm going to open up for testimony in favor of R 22038. I get two people that hands up. You want to speak in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Can you state your name and address, Lou, for the record? You were on mute. Lou, you want to state your name?
Oh, yeah, sure, Lou Juris here. I'll go ahead. Lou Juris here from 56 Hayne Street, and I'm certainly in favor of the effort to square off the Oval at Walnut Street. You know, it's a culturally rich area, originally, you know, settled, of course, after Native Americans, a lot of the European immigrants, including, over there, you've got the Hellenic Circle as well, but I think it'll be a benefit to the city and the residents there. Right now, it's a multicultural area, and I hope that the residents do get some say when it comes time to do the effort to put their input in for a minimization of disruption to their daily lives, along with the businesses, of course. And, yeah, just voicing my approval for the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lannan, do you want to speak in favor?
Yes, please.
Name and address for the record?
Yeah, Rich Lannan, home address 11 McGrath Road in Pelham, office is in Nashua. Yeah, just briefly, I think Director Cummings alluded to it, I've been on the Downtown Improvement Committee, and I'm not speaking in behalf of them, but being on that committee and the committee before that, back when the sidewalks were all done, give or take 10 years ago, obviously, Main Street was the focus, which is where all the work was done, with the new sidewalks, trees, and planters and so forth. But even back then, and as recent as probably a few years ago, this is before the Performing Arts Center was even a reality, we ended up walking both Downtown Improvement Committee and just some various business owners, all the side streets off the Main Street, and the importance of, you know, some future improvements. But I think it's always been looked at, that we need to get to some of them, maybe all of them, but over time, and West Pearl Street seemed to always be at the top of the list, only because it's well-traveled, there's probably the most amount of businesses in that short stretch between Main and Walnut Street, and obviously being with the intersect important street, and it was overdue 10 years ago when we did those walks, it's even more so, with the Performing Arts Center. You know, I feel strongly, I know others do, that longer, reversing the traffic, I think will be awesome as well, but I've not, just, you know, doing the improvements as the plans are shown, and I've been on some of those Zoom meetings about looking at the plans, and I think they've done a great job in the design and planning. So I know I personally support it, as a property owner downtown, and would love to see the board, you know, step behind it as well. Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else in the chamber. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak in favor? Seeing no one else, I'll now open it up for opposition. Again, there's no one in the chamber. Is there anyone online that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I'll open it up once again for people speaking in favor. Seeing no one, I'll open it up once again for people in opposition. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing on R 22038. I'll open the?
At 7:22, correct?
Yes. I will now open the public hearing on R 22042 relative to supplemental appropriation of $320,000 from FY 2022, assigned fund balance in the Department 152 fire account, 51330 shift coverage. Chief, would you like to come up and explain?
Good evening, Steve Buxton, Nashville Fire. Basically, the reason for the supplemental budget is unanticipated vacancies within our organization. Those come in a couple different forms, COVID leave, vacation leave, retirements, separation from service. The vacation leave is probably the biggest driving factor in all of it. Our members went two-plus years where they could carry their vacation leave on the books, and now they're at a point in time where the world is opening back up, and they can utilize that leave, and they are doing so. In addition to that, in fiscal year '22, we had 27 openings within our organization. 14 of them were filled within the first six weeks. Within the three to four months that followed, we are quickly back up at 10 more openings, and those members just hit the floor the beginning of June. So, you know, we carried a lot of those openings from anywhere from 48 weeks, six weeks, 22 weeks, but that all adds up over time. Those 27 openings, the halftime alone to cover those positions came up to $404,000. So we have tightened our belts, we are doing our due diligence, but over at the Fire Department, 90% of our organization, when a member does not come to work, we have to hire a member to take their spot and fill the position. So I'm requesting favorable passage of this, so we can make the books work and pay all of our employees as we wrap up fiscal year '22.
Questions from Alderman? Alderman Millborn? Born, sir.
Is that personal privilege? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we've had ongoing conversations about this, Chief, and this is basically just because of the COVID leave policy that was put in place for your members, and that you potentially see this taking maybe a year or two to kind of settle and get that extra vacation time used out, is that right?
That's correct, Steve Buxton, Nashville Fire. So we had transitioned to this accrual vacation system in 2017, 2018. Previous to that, the Fire Department worked on a deposit system. We would all get our leave in January, and whether you were a two-week guy or a five-week person, you had a year to spend it, and you weren't carrying anything over. We transitioned to this accrual system where members can accrue up to two years' worth of time. We transitioned to that in 2017, 2018. There was a little bit of a wave of this back then as we entered into the new system, but it had kind of smoothed out, and we had it figured out to some degree, and then COVID hit, and people didn't really utilize a lot of their vacation time during that time period. So I guess the best way to put it is their pockets are overfull with vacation leave at this point in time.
Follow-up, Alderman Moore?
So really, just be us honoring the leave that these guys have earned?
Yes, Steve Buxton, Nashville Fire. So he brings up a good point, this is leave that they have earned. He also is trying to make the point of while we're over the highest point of this, by the end of this year, and the end of this year, I mean December of '22, this problem may potentially plague us for the next year or two until everybody kind of settles out.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, and maybe to help some of the other Aldermen understand it, as you know, I have some little experience with this, but anyways, for the life of a fireman, the expectation is you're going to physically be there to work. That's how the system works. Fire is no, no vacation, no sick days, no blizzards or, you know, bad weather. So the thing is, you need a force that's ready. So if the fireman has something very personal in his life that he wants to attend to, such as a graduation, family event, or something like that, there's very limited options. It's not like private industry and say, oh, can I work some comp time and get something else? There's nothing like that. That comes out of pocket, and in this case, one of the venues to do so is to try to apply to receive vacation time. There is a cap, there used to be a cap on vacation. So you may be refused on your vacation because there's a lot of firefighters that are out at that particular time. The only other option was to get somebody that we would call it work in a mutual or a swap, but like everything else, payback is that B-word that they say. But you would actually owe that guy the time, and you would have to come in to physically work it. So there's very little options, and it seems, you know, they are deserving of lives just like everybody else, so this best covers it in this type of situation. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing for people who want to speak in favor of R 22042. There's no one in the audience here in the chamber. I see one hand up. Lou, state name and address for the record again.
Lou Juris here, 56 Hayne Street in Nashua. Yeah, I'd speak in favor of supplemental funding to cover. Just curious about the way the vacation time was transitioned in '17 to '18. I worked in a similar system, and we had to use the time by the end of the year in almost all cases, and I'm sure there was reason, I'm sure it was approved, but it sounds like this might go on for another year or two, at least, that's the chief's sentiment. And, but I would, I voice my approval. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak in favor? Seeing no one? Anyone like to speak in opposition? There's no one in the chamber, so there's no one on Zoom. Once again, anyone that would like to? Once again, anyone that would like to voice approval of R 22042? No one in the chamber, no one on Zoom, and once again, anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on R 22042 at 7:30. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the June 27, 2022 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, excuse me. Yes, okay. And we are adjourned at 7:30.